In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Drop and running. So I'm very happy to introduce Jessica Vazina, Principal of Hancock with some of her students. We are using the owls. So I'm gonna ask, because we found that the other streaming doesn't pick up sound and presentation, so this does, this is... We're good. We're good.
Some just came in.
No, that's a different one. So, so we're gonna move out of your way, but when they present, I'm gonna ask if the audience, what we learned last time is I think people laughed during the presentation last time, and the owl will start swirling around and go towards sound. So if the audience could be quiet during the presentation so that the video stays on our very important presenters, that would be wonderful.
Don't make us laugh.
Try to hold it in. Laugh on the inside. So thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jessica Vazina. I am the principal at Hancock Elementary School, and I have some friends with me tonight. Go ahead.
My name is Wyatt Kessler. First grade.
My name is Lila Faber and fourth grade.
So we're going to present about our harvest supper that we had two weeks ago. This has been a longstanding tradition at Hancock Elementary School. Our students will make the meals that we have and then serve them to their families and communities. We use a lot of their own produce that our students plant and then harvest through Cornucopia. This year we had garlic onions, apples, and we actually had some wildflowers that we used to decorate each of the tables. Any of the other produce and materials and ingredients that we needed were donated to us from our PTO.
Our K-1 class made chicken stew. Each group had to follow the same recipe and mix. Measure out all the ingredients. We had some help from a few high school class students.
So that was their day of service at the high school, and we had some friends come and join us and help us. And Wyatt is gonna just tell us a little bit about what his favorite part was.
My favorite part was repinting chicken with my hands.
What else were some of the ingredients?
Some, well, of course there was, there was some chicken, and then there was some celery, potatoes, carrot.
That was about it, right? Maybe a little bit of seasonings?
Seasonings.
So this is my third year, and last year we actually decided to go with themes. So my first year we had the traditional soups. Last year we did chilies. This year we did stews. So it's had a theme now for the last couple of years. So our second and third grade class, do you remember Hancock, we have our third grade split? They made the beef stew. And then our third and fourth grade class made a veggie stew. I will say that the chicken stew and the beef stew were the most popular, and those were gone at the end of the night. We still had some veggie stew.
Please pull and peel all the ingredients for dessert. Apple crisp with vanilla ice cream.
And Wyatt, do you remember what the tools called that they use? Did they use a tool to cut meat out of them?
It was this, it was this apple core grinder.
That helps peel it and slice it?
Yeah.
So they got to do it all on their own?
Our fourth grade graders got to serve the families and like enjoy the French bread and apple crust with their stews.
So each year the fourth graders get to serve everyone that comes for the dinner? And we ask that those that come bring their own bowl and spoon, and that's how we serve it. And this is a big milestone for our fourth graders. They look forward to it each year to be the ones that get to serve the food.
They must enjoy their meal and prep our pasta painted in our PTO silent auction.
And the PTO silent auctions actually are the biggest fundraiser of the year, and they do a lot of work and support us at Hancock. And so we want to have a big thank you to Cornucopia for all of the materials that they supply for us, of course, our PTO. And then we had some friends from the high school come with Mrs. Joseph. And Mrs. Joseph was wonderful because she was able to move some of the time around because we were cooking in the morning and the students were scheduled to come in the afternoon. So they found a way to be able to come in the morning and help us. So it'd be a huge thank you to them. Is there anything else you want to add?
I helped, my mom and I helped pick, pull up garlic from the garden.
And do we use the garlic in some of the stew?
Yes.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice.
While we're on points of pride, I was lucky enough to help chaperone the kindergarten and the first dash second grade who last Friday for fire prevention week, went down to the Bennington Fire Department. And the kids got to climb on all of the fire trucks. And the firemen had an obstacle course set up inside the fire station. And they had the portable water guns that they set up with combs with balls on the top so that the kids could try to squirt the water and knock the balls down. And believe it or not, they actually got the kindergartners and first graders out of there without being soaking wet. I want to thank the fire department for having all the classes down there. Everyone had a really good time, so. Right, oh business, we have the presentation of resolutions. So CAT is going to be our delegate to the NHSBA Assembly. And that is on Saturday, I believe. And so we need to go over the resolutions and indicate whether or not we are for the resolution, in other words, yes, or we are not for the resolution, no. And so we can record those and CAT can go and present them at the assembly. There are quite a few of them, so I think if we go through them, unless there are a lot of questions or a lot of comments, we can just vote on each one of them and move forward through it, so.
Yeah, the first thing we need to do is to vote at the board to authorize CAT to be our representative. So.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, so the first three are, the first three resolutions were combined by NHSBA as an alternative, and they were all on open enrollment. So that would've been thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And because they were all on open enrollment, NHSBA combined them into one alternative resolution, which I, I mean, I personally, I thought it was, I thought they did a good job. I tend to go with their understanding of what is gonna work with the legislature, so.
Okay.
I would like to move that we approve NHSBA's alternative resolution.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, so the next one was to fully fund all state public education aid formulas before the funding of any other state obligation. NHSBA again offered an alternative to this, which was slightly more reasonable. I thought, you know, that one was a little difficult. So their rationale was, they made a minor change. And unless anybody objects, I think we should direct CAT to vote for the NHSBA version.
Can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and the next one was to, a proposal to oppose the inclusion of any non-German amendments to like proposed legislation in the legislature. And NHSBA did not support this resolution because sometimes those non-German amendments aren't very favorable to the districts. Sometimes that's the way you get your agenda passed is through those non-German amendments. So they did, they opposed that resolution. So it's up to the board, like whether they would oppose it or whether they want to see CAT support this resolution. I would move that we, do you want me to just move them off? I move that we oppose this resolution.
Point of order, do we have to vote to not approve something?
You have to, yes. You, yes. You either, you either vote yea, nay, or abstain.
Right.
I don't know if that's a point of order, but I just called it that.
It's a question, it's a question.
Because we're directing CAT on what to do.
Yeah.
So we have to vote in the affirmative on what we're directing CAT to do, very good.
Okay.
So I second, did, did Janine get a second?
Yeah.
She did.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, the next one was that schools receive state, all schools that receive state and federal funding must comply with state and federal laws regarding testing, hiring, special ed, inclusion. This was, I thought, more interesting. NHSBA did not support this resolution because they felt it weakened their wholehearted opposition to vouchers. So they did not, they did not want to see this resolution passed. So I move, you know, depending, again, this is what the board feels, but I also wholeheartedly oppose vouchers. So I would, I move that we tell, we direct CAT to vote nay on this resolution, number eighteen.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we got two nays. Tom?
Who were the two nays?
Who's Tom and who was the other one?
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so number nineteen is strengthen school building aid program to, and they named the number sixty million dollars annually, scheduled for an increase every two years based on the CPI. And NHSBA did not support this resolution simply because there are two existing continuing resolutions that already, like, that already cover the same policy. Their policy are, they're the same stance that they take for the legislature. So I'm not sure what you want to do about that.
Comments?
I don't understand, the issue seems to be that it's redundant and that's.
Yes, redundant, that's the word. Yes, good word. Good word.
So my comment is legal matters are often redundant.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we have a motion? Which way to vote?
Move to not support.
Okay. Second? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next one, number twenty, Universal, is for universal subsidized meal program for New Hampshire public school students. Again, NHSBA did not support this resolution because there is already an existing resolution. It's redundant.
I move that we vote to not support.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, number twenty-one, required, required by state law enforcement of federal gun-free school zones. This one was quite long, but that was, that's basically what it was. It had several parts. This comes up almost every year. NHSBA did not support because there are two current, like, continuing resolutions, same words. Last year, an alternative was offered, and it was withdrawn because the assembly could not agree on the alternative wording. So because of that, they just, they did not support this resolution again. It was redundant. It's already on the books.
Move to not support. Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Number twenty-two was to amend the current RSA to allow a simple, this one I think is very important to us, but, okay, so amend the current, the current RSA to allow a simple majority, which would be fifty percent plus one. Vote threshold for approval of school infrastructure projects that support maintenance, repair, and improvement of existing facilities. In other words, there, that sixty percent threshold that we have to clear now to get funds or a bond approved by the public in order to make any repairs to the school district, it's lumped in with the same thing as bonds to build new building. And this resolution would ask NHSBA to work with legislators to, legislators to come up with a bill that would lower that threshold to fifty percent plus one. Vote specifically for facilities repair and maintenance.
Okay. We have a motion?
Move to support the alternative resolution.
Second? All right. All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay, the next one is, okay, to fully and consistently fund the catastrophic special education funding. And NHSBA did not support because there are five resolutions that address this resolution more completely. Again, this comes up every year because it's such a big need.
I motion to oppose this.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Number twenty-four, allow individuals with a disability or caring for a household member with a disability to be counted as attending in person for establishing a quorum at, at meetings, at school board meetings. I'm not sure how you feel. NHS, they supported the alternative amendment. There's two existing and eliminating one that, so they, they support the alternative amendment because there are two existing and they are eliminating one that's already existing. So I would, I would say this is a support for NHSBA's alternative.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed?
No.
That's it?
Okay. One no? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I will give this to CAT and go over them with her. But if anybody has any other ideas about what they want her to do about these resolutions.
Okay. You want to go over the policies?
Oh, okay. Okay, so we have three, three policies for adoption tonight. The first one was just a very small change. The IGDGJJF, the Student Activities Fund Management and Fundraising, that was, the small change was to allow the building administrator to approve fundraising activities for students.
Okay.
I motion to accept the IGDGJJF as written.
Second? Right. Bill, second?
Thank you.
The next policy is. Do we vote?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We have any questions on that still? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Policy IKF, High School Graduation Requirements. If you remember, this is where we actually have an expansion of this policy, and we are adding a twenty-credit diploma because of the change in the administrative rules. The three oh sixes allowed us to do more than one diploma as a, as a district, a high school. So we are adding a twenty-credit. And after you approve, if you do approve this policy, it will go to the Education Committee for implementation.
Second?
I move to adopt policy IKF as written.
Second? We have a second? Jim, second? All right. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, the next, the last policy is BEDG Minutes. And this was quite an extensive reworking. We, for a regular meeting, it turned out that we were doing everything that we were supposed to do. But the way we handle non-public minutes and the way we warehouse the sealed minutes and process them after the ten-year period, as well as how we approve them, needed quite a bit of updating in order to comply with the new RSA or the updated RSA. And we have special forms that we, that will help clarify which policies are sealed and what the process is. And I'm not sure whether they're ready yet. They might not be. Are those forms ready yet to go?
Well, we, it's really an internal template for us to use. So we just have to try, try it out and refine it.
Right, because it will direct how we go about it if we're doing the non-public minutes. So.
Okay.
I move to adopt policy BEDG as written.
Second? All right. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Expense and encumbrance report.
You received in your packet an update on revenues, expenses, as well as the trust funds. Just to keep you up to date, I would note on expenses, there is people services, which is showing with encumbrances to be over expended. But we'll make some budget adjustments because if you look at 519 tuition or you look at the transportation, both of those are significantly under, which will offset that. That's all we did in special education. Other than that, we pretty much seem to be exactly where we should be at this time of year. You know, happy to answer any questions. Curtis?
So on the people services, that, how much of that over spending on that line is, is that accounting for the entire year's? Like, how much is it looking out and capturing the costs that are coming? Or are there things we don't see that could still inflate that line?
It is mostly the whole year. When we contract, we encumber those funds, which are for the whole year. This line also includes positions that we've had to contract for that we couldn't hire. So we'll come in with some budget adjustments to move money from those lines. So that also is why that's there. But yes, this is for the entire year. Anytime the contract is signed, the entire amount is encumbered.
Okay. Other questions? Can I have a motion to accept the report?
I move to accept the comfort report.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right. We have a request to accept a donation from South Meadow School. Can I have a motion to accept that gift?
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second?
To hammer the water over it?
Any questions about the request? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Public comment? No comment. Okay. We do have one non-public session that will be short. Legal advice. So I need a motion to go into non-public session for RSA ninety-one A three two C L for legal advice.
So moved. So seconded.
All right. And we have to do this by roll call, so.
Uh, Bill, yes?
I.
Janine, yeah?
Janine.
Tom, yes?
Curtis, yes?
Jimmy, yes?
Kim, I? Carl, yes?
Right here.
Okay.